I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dankert.
Present.
Bouton.
Present.
Carolyn.
Present.
Enright. King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number two is a motion for adoption of the agenda. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Item number two, motion for approval of the minutes from November 17th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
What's there, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed.
Item number three, citizens addressing the council. We will first start with Sandra Ewing and Mauer County TZD campaign compared driving. Is Sarah here? Sandra. I don't see her here. Well, if she comes in, let us know and we'll put her up. Anybody else that wishes to address the council? Sir?
Yes, I'm Dave Hahn. I was here at your last council meeting and according to what you suggested, excuse me, what you suggested that this young lady over here and I get together and work this deal out that I shouldn't have to tear my garage down and I find out today that she's went ahead and sent an email to all the people on the council and has never said anything to me about anything and she came out to my garage and stuff like that and we stood in there and she told me as when they decided to do something, she was going to send me a letter or a telephone call and come in and meet with her. I have never heard a thing about it and I just feel like I've been backstabbed on the deal there and I don't know nothing about it and she's trying to work something maybe out behind my back. I don't know what's going on and I have never got a letter from her or a phone call or nothing.
Have you called her?
No, I have not.
Why don't you call her?
I just found out today, late today, so I didn't know, you know?
Why don't you call her tomorrow? She'd be willing to meet with you and still work on it.
But I just don't think it's right to go ahead and go behind somebody's back like that.
The email we received was just backup information on what the backstory. There was no resolutions included.
Yeah, but I thought I should have got a letter to know what's going on too, shouldn't I have?
Not necessarily. It depends.
Okay.
Give her a call tomorrow. I just talked to her. She's more than willing to meet with you and work it out. Okay? Matt, you know, Matt, I talked to attorneys and other people and they said that unless it's an open meeting, we are not obligated to let you sit here and make personal attacks on council members, staff, and other people in organizations. I'm going to let you go tonight, but this is going to be the last time.
I don't understand quite what you said.
I know you don't understand. That's obvious from the presentations you put on.
Well, I was going to comment about the city government seems to promote double standard liberty and justice for all and seems to have like a war against citizens, especially poor, low-income citizens. And my question would be like, how come like a private business like Keane Motors gets like a $2 million free public-built dyke and this while like the mayor, like your neighborhood, Turtle Creek neighborhood that gets flooded out, they don't even get a $1 million dyke? Anyway, like private business, Keane Motors pays maybe like $9,000 or less than $10,000 taxes to the city and the county like a year or so ago and yet like in the neighborhood, like your neighborhood, their taxes is way more than that, but they don't even get like a $1 million dyke. Otherwise, Keane Motors gets like a free public-built dyke, but not the neighbors where the mayor lives, along Turtle Creek. Otherwise, the Austin government seems to be promoting such double standard justice and seems to be like a war on low-income and poor people and like multimillion-dollar free public-built projects get benefited to private business. And anyway, I just thought I'd say that I object to that.
Okay. Now, you understand what I said. We're not going to have you come up in the next meeting.
I don't understand what you're saying. Do you say it a little more explicitly or maybe put it in writing?
Yeah, I'll send you a letter.
Okay. That'd be better.
Okay. You still live at that house, right?
I still live at the same address. Yeah, they got me down for taxes and everything. You bet.
Okay, you're getting mailed there?
That's right.
Okay. I'll send you a letter. Anybody else? Okay, our chief has some good news for us on the holidays. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Today is Derek Ellis, our newest officer's first day. He comes from a law enforcement background. His father currently is a sergeant on the Mauer County Sheriff's Department and we were able to secure Derek from Northfield Police Department and he decided to come back and work in his hometown area, so I would like you to welcome Derek Ellis as our newest police officer today.
And Derek, you're supposed to, new police officers are supposed to give a five-minute speech on how they appreciate Austin. It's expected of all of you.
All right, well, I wouldn't rate for that.
No, you don't have to. I'm just kidding. Yeah, I'm just kidding. We know, you know, a lot of us know your dad. I've worked with your dad for years. I think, Steve, you probably know Jeff and your dad. Like I said earlier, we know the kind of family you come from, so we know you're going to be a good officer. We look forward to getting you going.
Congratulations.
Welcome, Derek.
Welcome. Thanks.
Derek, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Sandra has not come in yet?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Then we are to the consent agenda. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Under bids and awards, item number six is a resolution accepting bids for street construction on 8th Avenue Northeast. Stephen?
In planning for our 2015 street reconstruction, we have bid a project a little bit earlier than normal. This project is, involves the reconstruction of 8th Avenue and 8th Street Northeast adjacent to the Hormel Plant. This project will be a concrete pavement reconstruction project and it'll also involve underground utility replacement. We had one bidder on the project, Doyle Connor Company, with a base bid of $1,233,498.30. With this project, it does have federal funding involved with it. About 49% of the project, or $600,000, will be funded with a federal grant. We will also use state aid funds to fund about 45% of the project, or $560,000 approximately, and the remainder will be funded with local funds through our Fund 49 and Fund 61, which is some funding dollars that we have for street reconstruction projects. This has been reviewed by Mendat for compliance with their disadvantaged business and equal opportunity employment requirements, and we would recommend awarding the project to Doyle Connor Company.
Counsel, anything? Questions, remarks? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dankert. Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number seven is under public hearings is a resolution, public hearing for the establishment of a tax increment financing district number 13.
Yes, Michaela's here from Springstead to go through the tax increment financing plan. This is a public hearing, Your Honor, so we do need to let the public have an opportunity to talk also, but Michaela will walk through the proposed tax increment financing district, which would be out at the Oak Park Mall area.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As Tom said, I am Michaela Hewitt.
You guys speaking?
With Springstead Incorporated. I want to spend just a couple of minutes walking through the action presented before you tonight, which is the proposed establishment of a tax increment financing district. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to briefly discuss what tax increment financing is, review the modified development program for development district number one, and review the TIF plan for tax increment financing district number 13. So what is tax increment financing? It is a financing tool that cities use to finance infrastructure and other improvements related to development and redevelopment projects. It's a method of capturing tax-based growth resulting from the new development and redevelopment projects. And the new local taxes or the increment is captured by the city to finance the public improvements and other extraordinary costs related to development and redevelopment projects. There is a fixed term for capture and then the new development is added to the tax base of the city as a whole and the county and the school. Tax increment financing is defined by the state statutes 469-174 to 469-179, and it is a gap financing tool that cities commonly use. There are different compliance requirements and different types of tax increment districts depending on the type of project or the year in which it was created, and it's a tool that's primarily used by cities and counties. And again, it provides a funding source for development and redevelopment projects. This is just a basic TIF model. It shows in the orange area what the existing value of a property was, and then following years of deterioration, that value drops down, at which point the tax increment district is created. And as we can see, the existing tax base prior to establishment is the orange area and that is the taxes that continue to go to the city, county, and school, as if there were no tax increment district. That area in the light purple is the incremental taxes based on the new development that occurs. That is the amount that's captured by the city for a fixed period of time. And then following the tax increment district, that dark purple area, that's the increased tax base that the city, county, and school all are able to enjoy following the completion of the district. So why do cities use TIF? They use it to stimulate development where it otherwise might not occur, which is referred to as the "but-for" test. It encourages development of uses that might not otherwise occur, such as low-income housing, redevelopment, other types of development. It's used to enhance and grow the tax base, to facilitate necessary infrastructure improvements, and to coordinate new developments within existing plans. The process for approving the tax increment district, which leads us up to tonight, includes a review of the tax increment financing project. It is an approximate 60-day approval process, which includes notifications to the county and school, publication of a hearing notice, planning commission review, and ultimately the holding of a public hearing, which is why we're here tonight. Along with approving the district, the city has to make the "but-for" test, finding that the proposed redevelopment would not reasonably expect it to occur solely through private investment within the reasonably foreseeable future. The modification of the development program for development district number one, the only modification to that is to include the proposed budget and the creation of tax increment financing district number 13. It's important to point out, upon considering the approval of the tax increment financing plan, that it simply provides a city with the authority to use tax increments to assist with financing of necessary public improvements related to the project. It does not obligate the city to use the tax increment or to provide tax increment assistance, and it does not obligate the city to issue bonds. It's simply an authority tool for the city to use. The purpose of the plan, again, is to provide the statutory authority for the city to use tax increment financing. It contains all of the legal terminology and language that's required by statute with the approval of a tax increment district. It's based on the assumptions of the redevelopment, as we know, at the time, and again, it does not commit the city to use tax increment. The plan that's recommended for approval by the council tonight provides what we feel is maximum flexibility for the use of tax increment, and I'll go into that in just a moment. There are lots of sections of the TIF plan. I won't go into every one in great detail and will be available to answer any questions you might have, but again, pursuant to the statute, there are several pieces of information that are required to be contained in the TIF plan. It includes the definitions related to the project and the city, the statutory authority for use of the tax increment, which is a redevelopment tax increment financing district, the need and the public purpose, and the statement of objectives, and these all correlate to the city's development program that has previously been approved. And in the TIF plan is the designation of a redevelopment district, which is the type we're considering. The duration of the district is for a maximum of up to 26 years. It's 25 years after receipt of first increment. If all the obligations of the district have been achieved prior to that, the district could be decertified early. However, at this point, it's assumed to remain open the entire 26 years. The property in the TIF district is three parcels that comprise the Oak Park Mall area. The anticipated development to occur is an approximate 60,000 to 90,000 square foot retail facility, and it would be redevelopment in the current site. The findings in need, which is important in establishing a redevelopment district, are the qualifications as a redevelopment district. Here, the first finding is that the project meets the occupancy test, and there are currently three parcels that are all occupied, which means they contain a building, gravel, parking lot, some type of structure, and are not green space. 100% of the area in the TIF district is currently occupied, which is common with the redevelopment project. 100% of the buildings contain code and condition deficiencies, which exceeds the 15% threshold by building, and therefore, with one building being substandard, 100% of the buildings in the proposed district are substandard. The budget of the TIF plan, the total estimated project cost based on the information we know now, is a total budget of about 4.4 million, and that includes anticipated costs, including some demolition, public utilities, site improvements, preparation costs, other redevelopment costs, interest payments, and some administrative costs. These line items can be changed within the, individual line items within the budget can be modified, but the total budget as approved in the plan tonight would be the 4.403 million. The statute requires that the sources of revenue equal the project costs, so the total estimated sources of revenue, which would be tax increment financing revenues from the project, are equal again to the 4,403,469. The estimated total bonded indebtedness, which includes any obligations the city might incur, again, is that 4,403,469 amount. The original net tax capacity, that's the current tax capacity value of the properties upon establishment of the district, that would be classified and remain as commercial industrial property. Those are the taxes that continue to flow to the city, county, and school. The original local tax capacity rate, when a tax increment district is approved, the current rate remains frozen over the life of the district, so that in future years, if the rates, combined rates of the city, county, and school go up, we are limited to the amount of increment captured based on the frozen rate at the time of the district creation. Right now, we're assuming the payable 2015 rate would be used, assuming it's certified prior to June 30th of 2015. However, we don't have that information now, so these projections are based on the payable 2014 rates of the 1.08571. In the TIF plan, as well as the projected captured net tax capacity in the tax increment based on the estimated incremental new value of the proposed development, there's also statutory requirements on the use of tax increment and any excess tax increment that might remain above the budgeted amount. Another thing to point out in a TIF plan is the redevelopment district is subject to what's referred to as pooling and the five-year rule. Pooling refers to any spending of tax increment beyond five years or outside the boundaries of the tax increment district. And it's important to note that the majority of the activities of the district must occur within the first five years of when the district is certified, and that's currently the plan for this district. There is a limitation on the use of administrative expenses, both on the amount and on what they are used for, and that's contained in the TIF plan pursuant to the statute. There's also a limitation referred to as a four-year rule, which means that the activities must occur on each parcel within the district within five years, within four years, excuse me. Otherwise, those parcels aren't, what's referred to as knocked out of the district. They can come back in, but it's at the current value. So again, this is to try to control the amount of redevelopment occurring within the district. Estimated impact in other taxing jurisdictions, this is a requirement of the statute that the notice be sent to the county and school 30 days prior to the public hearing. That includes the estimated taxes of that 4,403, what the amount would be for the city, county, and the school. The last part is the exhibits to the TIF plan. There's a map of the proposed boundaries of tax increment district number 13, a map of the development district number one, which again, the development district is the overall project area of the city. This boundary is different than the TIF district, and it comprises of a larger area and significantly more parcels than this TIF district. Also contained are the tax increment assumptions report, which is the assumptions used to build the revenue projections. The revenue report, which is showing the total tax increments collected over the 26 years based on the assumptions. The tax increment, oops, excuse me, impact report, which is the estimated impact on the other taxing jurisdictions showing the revenue amounts. The market value analysis report, which is required to show what the estimated total value would be created on the site as opposed to doing nothing. And lastly, the redevelopment district findings, which is the basis for which the tax increment district can be established. So that is an overview of tax increment financing and the redevelopment plan presented before you, and as Tom said, at this point, I can either take questions or we can overlook the public for public comment.
And just one thing to clarify. As she noted, the total budget is authorized at 4.4 million dollars. We don't expect to use all that, but she's given us authorization within the realms of this document. If we run into some unknown overages, that we do have the authority to capture that and expend those dollars within the district if need be.
Counsel. Public hearing, does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution to approve.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert. Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor. Thank you. Thank you, Michaela. And number eight is a resolution for a decertification of tax increment financing district number nine. Mr. Dankert.
As was discussed at the last work session, we have a tax, and I've been working with Michaela on this one as well, we have a tax increment district out where the Eagles Club and Jim Supervalue is, that all the debt and obligations have been paid off. It's tax increment district number nine, better known as Pellet in our area. What we've requested counsel to do is authorize the early decertification of that TIF district such that the future taxes would then be split, city, county, school, instead of all going to the city. Again, our obligations are paid for, so we have no reason to be keeping that district going. Additionally, any cash remaining at the end of this year that's not used, we will have to remit back to the county, and they will split that up, city, county, school, based on the last couple of years' tax rates. So with that being said, I request counsel authorize the attached resolution, which decertifies tax increment district number nine effective December 31st of 2014.
Counsel? If the council has nothing, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dankert. Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor. Thank you. Number nine is a motion authorizing engineering consulting services with Sand Tech for fire station concrete repairs in 2015. Tom?
As was discussed at the last work session also, we have a memo from Chief McCoy regarding Phase 1 and Phase 2 costs related to fire station concrete repair. He'd like to get the engineers working on that and would request counsel authorization to sign that consulting services agreement.
Okay. Counsel, anything? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Ten. Adoption of stormwater management ordinance. Mr. Lang.
Yes, as we discussed at the previous work session, the city is obligated under our NPDES permit to oversee stormwater throughout the community, and part of that involves adoption of a new stormwater ordinance. Part of our requirements with our NPDS permit involves six different items. One is public outreach and education. Number two is public participation and involvement. Three is illicit discharge detection and elimination. Number four is construction site stormwater runoff. Number five is post-construction stormwater management, and number six is pollution prevention and good housekeeping. This ordinance, as we reviewed at the, like I said, at the previous work session, really addresses three of those six items. It addresses the illicit discharge and connections, which deal with illegal connections to the storm sewer, also illegal dumping of things into the storm sewer that are not supposed to be there. The ordinance deals with construction site erosion and sediment control, so as people are building new homes or street reconstruction projects, whatever those may be, this governs what is done on those projects, and it also deals with post-construction stormwater. So after a project is complete, how that site is drained and restored is governed under this ordinance. So those are the main three key points, along with some enforcement and penalties that go along with that. So it is, the ordinance, as included in your backup material, is exactly the same as what we reviewed at the work session. We did not make any changes to that, nor were there any recommendations at that time to make any changes. So at this time, we would recommend approval of the ordinance.
Counsel, any questions, comments?
I've got a question. What's an example of an illegal connection to the storm sewer?
Illegal connection could be like a floor drain in a wash bay that connects to the storm sewer, when really that should connect to the sanitary sewer because of those soaps and things that are in that wash bay that needs to go to the sanitary.
Okay. What else? If there are no further questions, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Okay, now we need an ordinance.
I want the ordinance to be prepared.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Dankert.
I want an option of publication, I'm sorry. I want an option of publication of the ordinance.
Okay. And the second was?
Second.
Mr. Dankert. Tom? Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes 6-0, Your Honor. Thank you. Eleven is a resolution setting plans, qualification, and rates for city health insurance for 2015. Mr. Dankert.
As is before you today from HR Director Wykman, is the resolution setting the plans and rates for our health insurance plan effective January 1st, 2015. The proposed rates with Plan A through E have increased $35 per month, and we would recommend approval of this. Our health insurance fund actually has been taking a hit lately, and the costs are expected to increase for 2015, but we still have some fund balance available that we would like to use to help balance that increased cost.
Okay. Does the council have any questions on this? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert. Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor. And 12 is another resolution adopting health insurance plans and required employee contributions for said plans for non-bargaining unit employees for the calendar year 2015. I assume it's.
This resolution sets the employee and employer contributions for the 2015 year. Those that are covered by a bargaining unit, which are eight bargaining units in the city of Austin, they already have their rates covered as part of that, but this will cover individuals that are not covered as part of a bargaining agreement. For 2015, the city will contribute a maximum of $1,000 for family coverage per month and $400 for single coverage, and opt out those individuals that have proof of insurance could get a payment of $225 from the city. Just on a side note, this is the same maximums that are in all eight bargaining units that have an agreement that's through 2015 as well.
Counsel? If there's nothing, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, your honor.
Thirteen is a resolution establishing licenses and miscellaneous operational fees for 2015. Self-explanatory, and you look like you want to go into it. If anybody has any questions, let me know. Otherwise, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Fourteen is a resolution accepting donations to the city of Austin. We need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Fifteen is another resolution calling for a public hearing on January 5th, 2015, on the Turtle Creek One sanitary sewer project, project 1B-13.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Sixteen is a resolution. We've got a lot of resolutions tonight. Ordering preparation of feasibility reports for 2015 street and alley construction projects. Stephen?
This is the first step in preparation for our 2015 street reconstruction projects. It's a five-month process in order to have everything ready for spring reconstruction. The projects identified for this year would include South Crane Edition, and there are different streets and avenues there included with that project. Number two is Third Avenue Northeast from Main Street to First Street. Project number three is down by South Gate School, 19th Avenue and 16th Street Southwest. And the alley project that we're proposing is west of Main Street between First Avenue and Second Avenue Northwest.
Counsel, anything? Then we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Six, or seventeen is a motion approving the sale of public works equipment. Mr. Lang.
When we budget for replacing different vehicles, we incorporate into that budget the sale of the existing vehicle to try to bring down the overall cost of that new purchase. So over the last year and a half, we've purchased a few vehicles in the public works, and we would request selling the expired vehicles here. We have listed 1980 airport tractor, 1985 sludge truck, 97 paw truck, and a 2,000 dump truck.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Eighteen is a resolution approving an ICM agreement with LL Parks LLC. Stephen?
The next three items are all very similar in that we set forth requirements for flow and strength of certain industrial companies throughout the community. In this case, it is LL Parks LLC. They are a truck wash, and we monitor the flow, the BOD strength, the total suspended solids, the nitrogen, and also the pH. With that, we've set forth different limits. Attaches an agreement that we have reviewed with the owner, and we would recommend a two-year agreement that would expire on December 31st of 2016.
Counsel? If there's no questions or comments, we.
I have one. Is this comparable to the other car wash or truck wash that we've been dealing with?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, your honor.
Nineteen is a resolution approving an ICM agreement with International Paper.
Yep, this one is very similar, except for it is a three-year extension through December 31st of 2017.
Questions? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Twenty is two resolutions, A and B, approving an ICM agreement with Hormel Foods. Stephen?
We work very closely with representatives from Hormel. They are a big user of the wastewater treatment plant, and therefore, they have two agreements, one for the industrial side, of which they use 100% of the industrial plant at the wastewater treatment plant, and then a small portion of the domestic plant. So here, we have two agreements, and both of those are a one-year agreement with an expiration date of December 31st of 2015.
Once again, any questions or comments? If not, we'll start with A, approving an ICM agreement for the domestic plant.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, your honor.
Thank you. B, approving an ICM agreement for the industrial plant. We need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, your honor.
Thank you. Twenty-one is a resolution approving findings of fact and order relating to the declaration of a dangerous dog owned by Grace Gadoo. David, did you want to? I think we're all here for the hearing, but you might want to refresh us. And then you might not.
Little problem with the audio part here. Your honor, yes, as the council recalled, last council meeting, we did have a hearing on an appeal from a designation by the animal control officer as the identification and designation of the dog of Grace J. Gadoo, known as Mia, as a dangerous dog, and the ordering of its destruction. The city council did vote that the dog should be designated as a dangerous dog, but should not be destroyed on the condition that the owner of the dog comply with various sections, section two, and I think it was through seven at least of the dangerous dog statute. And those conditions must be met within 15 days after, excuse me, 14 days after service of these findings and order upon Ms. Gadoo. If during that 14 days she does not meet all those requirements, the dog can be seized. But she does certainly have the opportunity pursuant to statute to appeal this order to District Court.
Okay. And service will be when? Do we know?
We will make arrangements with the clerk of the police department to make sure that she receives the notice or the findings and the order.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.